Meeting order at approximately six thirty two. Commissioners, you received your February first twenty twenty three maybe minutes in the mail email. Are there any changes, deletions, additions?
Motion to approve.
There a second?
Second.
It's been moved to second for approval of the minutes as they are. All those in favor state by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions, motion carried. Under all business, I'm going to um. Move these first two items to the end of the agenda. And we'll start with new business tonight. Under new business, the first item is a variance and special exception applications for sixteen forty four North Third Street. Which is zone RM. Foul by Tareka. Stand and name right tenant. Proposing to establish a retail store as an accessory use onsite. And to request relief from the three required off street parking.
That. Um, so the request before the commission is a proposal to establish a retail store as an accessory use on site. Um, the applicant lives in the building on the upper floors, uh, which requires zoning hearing board approval of a variance application. Per section seven dash through a five point seven of the zoning code and a special exception application for relief from the three required off street parking spaces. As outlined in section seven dash three two seven point six of the zoning code. Property at sixteen forty four North Third Street is a point zero three acre lot featuring a three story twenty one hundred and ten square foot structure. Which was constructed circa nineteen hundred. Property is bounded by a property at sixteen forty six North Third Street to the north. Third Street to the east, property of sixteen forty two North Third Street to the south and a narrow grocer's alley to the west. It's attached structure features elements of the Italianate architectural style. Character defining features include brick facade, the unique storefront design on the first floor shared with the adjacent property. The octagonal divided light windows. And the main entryway features a recessed entrance. Planked with fluted pilasters beneath the wooden cornice with dentals which provide. Access to two doors, a simple metal door with three small panes providing access to the upper floors and the wooden door with a divided light half view pane above a panel. Which provides access to the first floor commercial space. Administration also includes windows in a variety of. Of sizes, styles and paint configurations. Front elevation features a divided light storefront window on the first floor topped with the aforementioned octagonal windows. The second and third floors feature one over one wooden windows set beneath arched brick lintels with. Wooden paneled infill. Rear of the property features a carport shared with the neighboring property and the second floor deck is screened by a painted lattice. The third floor of the structure appears to be topped with a flat. Rubber roof while the rear extension appears to be clad with metal roofing. As an attached structure, the property shares features with many of the others in its block, although the first floor elements substantially differentiate the building from those in the surrounding neighborhood. As such, the structure makes a unique contribution to the architectural and hyster- and historical character of the streetscape and neighborhood. The planning bureau staff recommends the request be approved with the following conditions. The retail store use will only occupy the three hundred and ten square feet of the front portion of the first floor. As indicated in the floor plan submitted by the applicant and the use will not be permitted to expand beyond this footprint without receiving zoning approval. Uh, any new signage advertising the business will submit a certificate of appropriateness application and receive approval from Harb. And will submit to any relief requests and receive approval from the zoning hearing board if not in conformance with the signage regulations. Uh, no outdoor or sidewalk sales of merchandise shall be permitted. Without the submission of a sidewalk use permit and approval from the planning bureau. And finally, the applicant will coordinate with the city's department of public works to ascertain whether additional refuse containers will be needed beyond those already provided for the existing residential units onsite. And update the billing account for the property. I don't think that would be an issue for this type of um. Uh, uh, use, but I just wanted to include that in there in case. There was some sort of administrative requirement from the DPW. Uh, the plan bureau staff recommends the request be approved for the following reasons. The size, scope and location of the retail business will not pose a threat to the public health, safety and welfare. Of the residents of the surrounding community and will not adversely impact the essential character of the neighborhood. The proposed use, a limited boutique style retail store is less intensive than some principal and accessory uses permitted by right in the RM zoning district. Uh, the applicant has submitted a petition of support with signatures from nineteen surrounding residents supporting the proposal. And the request for relief from the off street parking requirements is warranted due to the limited size and scope of the proposed business. The availability of on street parking and the likelihood that the local residents will comprise a significant percentage of the customer base will be able to walk or bike to the subject property.
Thank you, Steph. Could you state your name, address and your relationship to the project?
Um, Tareta Tennant, sixteen forty four North Third Street, apartment one, and I'm the owner.
Okay. Um, you heard the staff report uh with the conditions. Are you acceptable of those conditions?
Yes.
Okay. Did you want to add anything to the report?
This is awesome.
Okay.
No.
Okay. Um, one thing I was gonna say to you, but I see you took care of that, which always the commissioners always would like. For the projects to talk to the community, but I see you have done that.
Oh, yeah, that's a midtown's a good, it is. I I know everybody, kids, everything.
Okay. Commissioners, I have no questions at this time. And I'll start with Commissioner O'Toole.
All right, uh, Treta, you you don't own the building, do you?
No, my landlord, um, he's the same landlord since nineteen hundred. Well, he's the son of.
I agree.
I mean, well. I'm sorry, Bob. Um, I'm 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 nervous, but I'm gonna get it.
Absolutely.
Okay, his father owned it and where I was, where I am was a jewelry store.
Right.
And on the corner was a hat store. So what he, because it's listed as a five bedroom home, that's what I see it at. And what he did is where I'm at, you usually can go straight through to the corner apartment, but he put a um wall there. So that's his apartment on itself. It's really nice. It's original inside of that first one. So where I was was a jewelry store and a clothing store that his wife had, and he said he stopped in nineteen seventy three. All right, he just stopped.
And your residence, you you is in the second or third floors, am I?
On the first floor.
And Joe, did you, did you say she has spoken?
Neighbors or something.
Yeah, it it's all I saw it somewhere in here. He's spoken to.
Uh. Jeffrey, you you think it's necessary to make one of the conditions that it be limited to the uh. Type of business, the boutique, I mean, I I need to see a, we we gain our permission and then two years from now, it's a it's a neighborhood convenience store.
Yeah, well, it's uh, so it's classified as a retail store and a convenience store is a separate classification, so that's what requires only relief to switch from one to the other anyway.
No, I I did my first, when I first came down here. I did try that.
All right.
And Jacob, he was honest and he told just what you said and I, and he's right.
Yeah, it's a whole different animal.
Exactly, exactly.
Yeah, other than that, I I know. Other questions.
Yeah, with the um. The approval by the staff. Item number three. He said, um. He has submitted a petition of uh, important change. Nineteen's rounding, but. Um, Commissioner Reed, Commissioner Reed.
I have no questions.
Uh, Commissioner Green.
I don't really have many questions, just uh, what are your potential operating hours?
Um, ten thirty to four.
That's four PM, right?
Yes.
All right, that's all I have. Thank you.
And I guess you don't expect um. Many folks topping in front of this. Uh, your store like pickups or anything?
No.
All right, I saw the question I have at this time. I'm gonna go to the public. If they have, are if you're for or against the project, state your name and address. I'll start to my left. And then I'll go to the middle. Go to my rights. There's no comments from the public. Commissioners, uh, can I get a motion?
Yeah, motions approved with conditions.
There a second?
Second.
Just moving to second for approval of the project with the conditions, all those in favor state by saying aye.
Aye. Aye.
Opposed, abstentions, motion carried. Good luck. You did very well.
Thank you. Thanks, Ari.
Uh, the next item, item number two, this is a special exception application for. Twelve twenty three North Second Street, it's a zone RM. Is filed by a grand eligible. Uh, this is to establish a short term rental onsite and to request relief. From the requirements were in all street parking space.
Uh, yes, so the applicant is proposing to establish a short term rental onsite and to request relief from the requirement for an all street parking space. Um, and as a short term rental, uh, we don't really have a classification for that in the zoning code, um, so. It's being filed as a um use not specifically prohibited by the zoning code. Um, similar to maybe some of the like event space uh operations that you've seen in the past. Uh, where it doesn't really neatly fall into a classification, so it um. It is submitted under that um aspect of the zoning code, uh, which does require a special exception. Uh, the property at twelve twenty three North Second Street is a zero point zero three acre lot featuring a three story twenty nine hundred and five square foot structure which was constructed nineteen oh three. Property is bounded by the property at twelve twenty five North Second Street to the north, a narrow grocer's alley to the east, a property at twelve twenty one North Second Street to the south and Second Street to the west. This struck, this attached structure features elements of the Italianate architectural style. Character defining features include. Brick facade, a split faced masonry porch with staggered masonry wall railings featuring a basement window with decorative metal grate. The stained glass divided light. Transom above the first floor window, the Oriole window on the second floor featuring curved glass panes. The concrete lintels featuring keystones above the third floor window. Prominent cornice featuring brackets and decorative woodwork and the rooftop porch on the rear addition featuring a pergola. Main entryway features a full view wooden door set within a paneled. Wooden frame featuring dentals and topped with a frosted glass transom is accessed by a large concrete porch. Administration on the front elevation primarily features one over one wooden windows set in wooden frames with concrete sills and lintels. The outer windows on the second floor Oriole window feature feature relatively rare curved glass. The first floor features a picture window. The windows on the side and rear elevations are also one over one. Various facets of the rear and side elevations appear clad in vinyl siding. The rear yard features pavers in a concentric circle design. Structure is topped with a flat rubber roof while the rear extension features a rooftop deck with what appears to be vinyl railings and pergola. As an attached structure, the property shares many features with the eight other connected structures on the block. As such, and given its integrity, the structure makes a significant contribution to the architectural and historical character of the streetscape and neighborhood. The planning bureau staff recommends the request be approved with the following conditions. The applicant will receive approval from Harb for the proposed stairwell in the rear as this aspect is integral to the establishment of the proposed use. The applicant will not create physical division between the principal unit and the short term rental unit to ensure the property can be readily converted back into single family use. Should the applicant or a future owner wish to do so. Uh, operation of the proposed short term rental unit will only occur if the property is owner occupied. Property cannot be purchased as an investment property with the principal use being a short term rental. Guest stays will be limited to five days or a length of time determined by the zoning hearing board to be sufficient to allow reasonable operation of the use. To ensure that the property does not function as a multifamily dwelling or an extended stay hotel. And then finally, if granted approval, the applicant must file a mercantile permit application for the proposed use and provide proof of insurance to operate the business within their residence. Plan your staff recommends the request be approved with the following reasons. Property is currently owner occupied and the proposed short term rental will be operated by the owner. As such, in comparison to other unpermitted uses in investment properties. Current proposal does not remove a unit for city residents from the city's housing inventory. In contrast to other unpermitted short term rentals established throughout the city in recent years. The operator is an owner occupant and thus will be accessible to surrounding residents if the proposed use creates adverse impacts. Finally, the current proposal, if approved by the zoning hearing board and the conditions applied to it will help to guide other such proposals seeking to, seeking to legally establish short term rental units.
Thank you, Steph. Could you state your name and your address and relationship to the project?
Yeah, Grant Elidge, twelve twenty three North Second Street, owner of the property.
Uh, you heard the staff report, uh, are you acceptable of the conditions?
Yeah, there were a couple of terms that I wasn't familiar with before coming here, so I don't know whether now is the appropriate time to uh ask for clarification, but at some point.
Yes.
Clarification. Yeah, um, the five day term as well as the insurance, um, so. Whether that five day term is going to be imposed on the unit as well as the nature of the insurance that would be expected.
Yeah, so um, uh, this request as probably the planning commissioners are aware is the first time we've had one of these actually come for through the formal process and. Um, so we're looking to kind of um ensure that the use is operated in a way. Uh, that is, that does not create like maybe the potential for a a rooming house operation or some sort of other um, uh. Secondary unit onsite and so uh, we want to ensure that um, the. I guess that the the structure is able to house a business. I don't, we don't know if like your insurance doesn't. Homeowner's insurance can commit that operation. Um, and basically just to ensure that uh, the property is, you know, appropriately registered with the city. And uh, with regards to the st- uh, the number of days, uh, that may be something that the zoning hearing board um looks at and discusses or that the planning commission chooses to discuss. Um, you know, we wanted to make sure that it doesn't kind of creep into that again, rooming house territory where. You tend to have like week to week leases, so you tend to hit that like seven day period and then you can get into that situation and so by limiting it to under that timeframe, um, we're seeking to kind of differentiate those sources.
Perfect, thanks. Sorry.
Nice.
Yeah.
I I did hear you say uh, five days, Jeff, on our, on our. Reports here says seven days.
Oh. Is that uh, was that in the report there or?
It's under your pool.
Oh, uh, sorry, that should have been, that should have been five, yeah. Oh, I might, I might have uh modified it before I, after I gave it out to you guys, uh, so, sorry about that.
Are you acceptable of his answer or did you want to?
Yeah, thank you.
Okay. Did you want to add anything to the report?
No, I don't think so. I'd be happy to if anyone was interested in a conversation. After this evening related to the topic of a short term rental, I would. And appreciate Harrisburg and I want to advocate well for uh, for people who are trying to do the things that that I'm trying to do. Uh, as well as make sure that. That, yeah, I I I also care about the uh requirements being. Put in place uniformly as well, um. So I would, I would be open to a conversation if anybody was interested in continuing the conversation about this type of unit.
Actually, there are a couple of questions that probably need clarification. Uh, and and maybe I just missed it. I'm I'm a city.
City's listener, yes.
Uh, one, Jeff, is there, is there two entrances and exits to this place?
Um, well, there's.
Going to be a fire code question.
Right, I mean, there are currently two entrances and exits to the building, but as to the proposed unit, there is only one, so the applicant is proposing to construct a fire escape.
Right, will the fire escape create the second?
Yes.
Okay, so it won't just be one in and one out?
That's correct.
Okay, that, that would be one issue, uh. And two, I will say, I believe. While a recommendation is possible for a number of days, ultimately, that's a legislative function. Um, there is no code for it, um, so like many things that are test cases, you know, they might look to the planning commission for some guidance. But ultimately, that would have to go onto a piece of legislation. So.
I wasn't really clear on uh. More for Jeff and the city's listener. The differences between this one and bed and breakfast. You know, um, all those different types of rentals, I didn't know.
Yep, your bed and breakfast are defined. Uh, in our code. Uh, short term rentals are not, they have, it's 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 an issue that's everywhere right now. Um, and every time you think you have your hands around what that term means, it changes. You know, we have short term rentals of. You know, c- conference rooms now, we have short term rentals of uh. Outside areas on people's property. It's it's kind of really, it's kind of a no man's land. So we've been trying to define it for a while. I I will say I have marching orders as of recently to have a short term rental proposed. Uh, piece of legislation to city council. Um, the uh, without, I don't think there's a great agreement between all the different interested entities. Fire is very interested in how this is handled. Tax is very interested in how this is handled. Codes is interested, planning is interested, the mayor's office is interested, the city council is interested. Um, and then we get to questions like who's grandfather did and who's not, um, because some people have just been doing it. Uh, but um, so it's 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 a complicated question, but ultimately, we can make recommendations. Here, but and they can go to a particular application, but there is no legislative clarity at the moment for where the parameters are.
Short term rentals include Airbnb.
That's, that is that, right, that is that, but it's not the only, that's just a corporate name and there are many others. So. Um. And there is differing information depending who you talk to. You know, whether they're governed by hotel tax or not, um, it's just very differing information.
Um, with that, commissioners, I have no more questions and uh, concerns or questions, um, we'll start with Commissioner O'Toole.
Yeah, uh, Neil, the the legislation that you're. Trying to come up with, would that be in the form of a amendment to the zoning?
It it would have to be in probably other pieces of the code as well. So that would have its own public hearing requirement for that kind of amendment to the zoning code.
And Jeffrey, is this the first pergola to come in front of us?
Uh, yeah, for a short term rental, like I I get asked a lot about this on a daily basis, weekly basis or whatever, and my. My response to that has been, uh, generally, if you're looking for an investment property to just put a bunch of, you know, short term rental units and. You gotta go through this process, but we're probably gonna say no because. You know, that results in units being removed from the city's housing inventory and also they tend to be owned by people that are, you know, hard to reach and so if there are issues created by those. Um, it's might be almost impossible to like actually get in hold of the owner to address those and so what happens is they come down to the city and. Hey, you go, you know, chase the owner down to to address these, um, and for the most part, that discourages people from, has discouraged people from. Coming through the process, but this current applicant, you know, said, this is the house I live in, I'm okay with those, I, you know, I'm okay with. You know, going forward into a bit of a gray area here, and so, uh, that's why this is the first one you're seeing.
All right. And. And we do have current operators who are very adamant that they have no obligation to come to the city whatsoever. Right, because it's not in the code. Well, Grant, I appreciate you came. Uh, how many uh, how many tenants or how many guests do you anticipate having it at aim?
It's it's one bedroom uh with a full bathroom attached, um, so. There'll be a king bed in there is the current plan and that'll be about all.
All right, yeah, then, yeah, no further questions. I mean, this is the the first one before, so starting tonight, we can set the precedence. I think uh, I think the staff's done a good job of tightening this up to the point that I could. I I could be in favor uh with a clarification that I I agree with the five days limit and not the seven. That's all I have.
Uh, Commissioner Reed. Uh, Commissioner Green.
Thank you. I have a couple of questions, um. First, you live on the first two floors?
Correct.
Do you plan to continue to live on the first two floors?
Yes.
All right. Um, and they are like, that's just one unit, right? So it's not like you plan on separating the first two floors into separate apartments, right?
No, nope. Yeah, we are, yeah, we're in the first two floors and and not planning on going anywhere anytime soon.
Okay, um, have you ever done short term rentals before? Like, do you have short term rental properties?
I do not.
And then have you spoken to the neighbors about your plans to to start a?
Yeah, so we we've talked to a few neighbors as well as I happen to know one of the landlords, um, who is on the block adjacent to us and we've received positive feedback. Um. One individual offered to write a letter in support, um, and that just hasn't happened at this point, um, but if. The commission was interested in in seeing proof of that kind of support, it would be, it would be easy to to collect.
All right, that's the only question I have right now. Thank you.
Thanks.
Okay, is there anyone from the public for against this project? Once again, please stand and uh stick your name and address. We'll start to my left. And the middle. And to my right. The commissioners, um. Things to, as you said earlier, Commissioner O'Toole, um. This is our first one to deal with this, so. Um. I guess. Steph, you did a good job on that part. I know there's such a mixture with the bed and breakfast and rental. So we'll, I guess each time there's somebody comes up, we'll be experimenting and.
Well, I think, you know, it'll be helpful to have a first case on the record because now I'll, you know, have something to point to if people do ask.
And that would be, tell people, yeah, you have to come for us, I mean, it's. Just can't operate these.
Yeah.
But make, I'm sorry.
Well, they can. What's that?
They can.
It's not regulated, they can.
Wow.
All right, motions approved with conditions. And the condition of the fourth one would be in five days.
Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved in. Second uh for approval with the uh change of five days. Uh, all those favor, all those in favor state by saying aye.
Aye.
Uh, opposed, abstentions, motion carried. Good luck.
Thank you.
Okay, we're on item number three. This is a variance application for two oh two State Street. It's zone RF filed by uh Dave Butcher with WCI Partners LT. Is to convert the existing office building into a four unit multi family dwelling. The proposal requires relief from the density regulations in section seven dash three oh seven point three of the zoning code. Uh, so.
Uh, yeah, and just for a point of clarification, so this is a zoning relief application is a company in a land development plan too. So I think it'd probably be. Um. Wise to handle these the same way you did last month with the North Forest Street property where you just kind of do the questions for both. Um, and then take separate votes at the end uh for both of the applications. Uh, so the. The applicant is requesting a zoning relief to convert the existing office building into a four unit multi family dwelling. Um, I believe by the uh, um. Uh, square footage of the lot, uh, the use would be able, the property would be able to accommodate one uh unit on site by right. Uh, the property at two oh two State Street is a zero point four acre. Lot featuring a three story thirty six hundred and seventy six square foot structure which was constructed circa nineteen fifty five. The property is bounded by a property at five oh nine North Second Street to the north, property two oh four State Street to the east. State Street to the south and the property at two hundred State Street to the west. The detached structure features elements of the Italianate architectural style. Character defining features include the brick facade. Brownstone water table featuring decorative metal grates on the basement windows, the grand entryway, the second story porch with wooden railings along the side. The rounded bay window in the rear featuring curved windows topped with a curve divided light transoms. And the substantial cornice with brackets, dentals and decorative woodwork above the front and side facades. Main entrance features wooden panel double doors framed by panel pilasters and topped with an arch transom. And a substantial pediment featuring a key and decorative woodwork. It is accessed by brownstone steps with metal railings. Rear entrance features a panel door with a half view pane set beneath a simple trance. Administration primarily features one over one windows with wooden sills and lentils. Front elevation features eight total windows with the first and second floor windows having louvered shutters. The structure is topped with flat rubber roofs. The building mirrors the connected structure at two oh four State Street as well as much of the architecture along this stretch of State Street and retains much of its original integrity. As such, the structure contributes significantly to the architectural and historic character of the streetscape and neighborhood. Uh, the planning bureau staff recommends the zoning relief request be approved with the following conditions. The applicant will receive approval of the associated land development plan application filed concurrently with the zoning relief application. And if the applicant intends on making next, any exterior alterations to the property, they must be reviewed for performance with the historic. District design guidelines and if necessary, will file a certificate of appropriateness and receive approval from part. Laying Bureau Staff recommends the request be approved for the following reasons. The proposed project will adaptively reuse an office building, ensuring the continued occupancy of a historically and architecturally significant building. The proposal will add new residents to the neighborhood to activate the street on nights and weekends and continue growing a customer base to support local businesses. Finally, given that the property has retained its internal configuration as distinct units. And the project will be returning the property to its previous use. Proposal meets the criteria for the granting of a variance application. Uh, the planning bureau recommends that the land development plan. Be approved for the, with the following conditions. The applicant will receive approval of the associated variance application filed concurrently with the land development plan application. The applicant will coordinate with the Department of Public Works to ensure that the account billing is updated to reflect the proposed change in groups. Laying Bureau Staff recommends uh the request be approved for the same reasons as uh.
Thanks. Could you state your name, address and relationship to the project?
Sure, uh, Dave Butcher, nineteen hundred North Second Street uh with WCI Partners. We are the owner. And the developer of the property.
Lori, Lori Portini with WCI Partners, nineteen hundred North Second Street.
Okay. Are you both heard uh the uh staff report with the um conditions? Are you acceptable of those?
Yes.
Did you want to add anything to this? To you, to the report or is it satisfying?
No, no.
Um. Jeff, I'm just not, wh- what's the hardship here for the variant?
Uh, so the internal configuration of the building um has not really changed even from its conversion from a previous residential use to an office use. Um, so I did check with uh the codes administrator to confirm that this was not just a case of, oh, this was an office building and they're requesting it to be. Converted to four units. Um, and she did convert, confirm that there are um three separate units on the upper floors and the first floor was an office use. Based on everything she was able to research in the property records. Additionally, as the applicant um noted uh in their um submission. I believe there are three uh kitchens uh in the, in the property and three full baths which kind of lends itself. Uh, to that previous configuration of individual residential units. Um, so really they'd be. It's more converting the first floor commercial space into an apartment building and. Uh, you know, returning the upper units um to their original use.
And there, there's four full uh bathrooms and.
Okay, commissioners, I have no questions at this time. If you have any questions or concerns, um, then we'll still the commissioner to.
Yeah, now we're seeing more and more applications almost identical to this. The two, three story commercial buildings wanting to convert back to residential. And we're converting back to what they were. So I think that's a good trend. Um, and I think, you know, post COVID, it's probably almost a hardship that there are no more commercial tenants to, to fill them. So, uh. Uh, David, I, I don't, I. There's no elevator planned here?
No.
I, I used to rent that third floor. Uh, it was great for my estate practice. By the time the clients got up, they're damn near dead. So I just. I pity anybody who has to rent that one, but yeah, that, that, I'm in favor.
Uh, Commissioner Reed.
I have no questions.
Commissioner Green.
Uh, what are the potential cost of the units? Have you already figured that out or are you still working on what they'd be renting for?
Yeah, still working on it, but um probably anywhere from a thousand. Maybe a little less for the second or rear.
Yeah, maybe eight ninety five, yeah.
All right. Thank you. Only question I have.
Okay, we'll go to the public. Um, anyone's for this project or against it, please stand, stand and state your name and address. We'll start to my left. Middle. My right. Commissioners, uh, this is pretty. Pretty clear here. Can I get a motion?
Yeah, for the variance, I have a motion to approve with conditions.
Is there a second?
Second.
The move in second for approval with the conditions, all those in favor state by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions, motion carried. Uh, Jeff.
And then a second vote on the land development.
Yeah, I, I make a motion that we, that we approve with conditions, the preliminary uh final plan, land development. Jeffrey's already given, Jeffrey's already given the report on it.
Yeah.
Yeah, same report, basically the same.
Do I ask you, let's go to the public or not, just because?
I mean, you can if you'd like.
Um. Uh, basically, commissions don't have any questions, so I'll go to the public. Um, if there's anyone for or against the land development plan. Um, state your name and address, go my left, am I right in my center, my right? With that, could I get a motion?
Motion's approved with conditions.
There a second?
Second.
It's been moved in second for approval for the land development plan. All those in favor state by saying aye.
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 Uh, opposed, abstentions, motion carried.
Thank you all.
They welcome back.
Thank you.
Good luck.
Thanks.
Okay, we're on item number five. Um, this is a live consolidation of land development plan application for twenty seven oh nine. And twenty seven, twenty seven seventeen North Front Street. It's zoned by, followed by Adam Kerr with EI twenty seven oh nine North Front Street LLC. Is to demolish the existing office buildings on the subject properties, combine lots into a. A single parcel and construct twenty one unit multi family buildings with associated uh site and access improvements. Including a forty four space accessory parking lot and plant screening.
I'll start. Uh, so yeah, the pro, uh applicant proposing demolish the existing office buildings on the subject property. Uh, combine the lots into a single parcel and construct a twenty one unit multi family dwelling with associated site and access improvements. Including a forty four space accessory parking lot and plant screening. Project will result in the construction of a floodplain compliant building and the removal of two noncompliant structures. Um, and um, just following up, this is uh the land development plan uh that is following up on the zoning relief application that the. Uh, planning commission reviewed at the February meeting. Uh, the property is twenty seven oh nine, twenty seven seventeen North Front Street, total point eight two acres with each accommodating a two story office building. Former features a forty eight hundred ninety six square foot structure which was constructed in nineteen sixty five. And the latter features a sixty three hundred and sixty two square foot structure which was constructed in nineteen fifty six. Properties are bounded by the property twenty seven twenty one North Front Street to the north. River Street to the east, property at twenty seven oh five North Front Street to the south and Front Street to the west. Twenty seven oh nine North Front Street is a detached structure featuring elements of the international architectural style. Characterifying features include the white brick facade, the awning over the main entrance and storefront windows on the front elevation. And the vertical arrangement of windows and panels between the second and first floors. Main entryway features a full view metal door flanked by plate glass windows across the majority of the facade. Each is topped with a simple metal trance. Administration also includes two vertical divided light windows on the first floor and eleven matching, eleven matching windows on the second floor of the front elevation. Side rear elevations feature nineteen metal divided light windows in a different style. Structure appears to be topped with a flat rubber roof. The front of the property features grass lawn with minimal landscaping and the rear of the property is entirely paved as an accessory surface parking lot. At one point, the property featured six foot high vinyl fences along the northern and southern property lines, dividing the property from its neighbors, although only the posts between the two subject properties remain. Twenty seven seventeen North Front Street is a detached structure featuring elements of the international architectural style. Characterifying features include the brick and stone facades, the large own awning with column sheltering. The entrance, the louvered awning over the second floor and the ribbon windows on the second floor of the front rear elevations. There are two main entryways with full view metal doors. One features double doors set in a metal, simple metal frame and the other is a simple door flanked by a side light and topped with a simple metal transom. Rear entrance features a solid metal door with a vertical pane topped with a simple transom. Administration also includes four evenly spaced metal windows on the first floor of the front elevation and a row of windows atop panels on the second floor. Rear elevation features a similar window configuration on the second floor and nine windows on the first floor. Structure appears to be topped with a flat rubber roof. Front of the property features grass lawn with minimal landscaping and the rear of the property is entirely paved as an accessory surface parking lot. Structures themselves are relatively nondescript buildings indicative of the modern infill architecture along Front Street that occurred in the mid twentieth century. Despite the relative prevalence of this building's style, massing and site configuration. Structures do not exhibit much aesthetic value and do not contribute to the historic and architectural character of the streetscape and district. Laying Bureau Staff recommends the request be approved with the following conditions. The applicant will receive approval from the zoning hearing board for the associated special exception application. Uh, the applicant will coordinate with the floodplain administrator on the necessary documentation we filed. Prior to and after construction of the building and all other instructions on site, including the trash enclosure and the freestanding sign. And the applicants will coordinate with the Department of Public Works to confirm the design of the refuse collection area on site. Uh, will to confirm that, the design of the refuse collection area on site will allow appropriate access and update the billing accounts to reflect the new use. Laying Bureau Staff recommends the request be approved with the following reasons. Existing structures are substantially deteriorated and outdated and require a significant amount of investment. However, due to the floodplain designation of both properties, the type of work that can occur on site is limited. New structure will be constructed in conformance with the floodplain regulations, ensuring that the long term viability of the develop, ensuring the long term viability of the development. And the safety of the residents. Uh, the project will remediate existing nonconforming aspects of the property related to setback encroachment and a lack of landscape screening. The proposal will result in the removal of a curb cut onto Front Street and physical separation between the rear parking area and River Street, improving vehicular and pedestrian circulation. Safety and conforming to the city's vision zero policy. Finally, the project will promote sustainable multimodalism by incorporating three EV charging stations and a secured bike locker inside the building.
Okay, like, thank you, staff. Could you state your names, address? Uh, and relationship to the project?
Ambrose Hines, attorney for the applicant, uh, Stevens and Lee, seventeen North Second Street.
Adam Kerr with EI Associates Architect and representing the owner, two thousand and one North Front Street.
Folks behind you, order. And you, because it's been recorded, so. Anyone else? Um, the two gentlemen and the young lady, you heard the report. Um, with the conditions, are acceptable of the conditions?
Yes.
Okay, did you want to add anything to the report?
Uh, just as, by way of update, this, as Mr. Knight mentioned, uh, this was the application we, I can. Were you last month on a special exception? That hearing uh was continued uh due on availability for witnesses. So. That hearing will be occurring later this month. Uh, but the land development has been filed and this is the land development uh component to that. Um, and we do have some updates as to what's happened since uh the last month's meeting, just.
Before you start, um, I think I last time I requested that you meet with the neighbors. Is that gonna be part of your report?
Yeah, so um, we were here a couple of weeks ago and it was, uh, I think an additional condition put on the application to meet with the uh neighbors. So we did so this past Thursday, February twenty third. Um, we held a community meeting. Um, there were about a dozen folks that came. And we had a good, probably hour, hour and a half discussion about the project. Um. Really the same uh couple of comments that were raised during the last meeting. Uh, in, including lighting and, and traffic off of uh River Alley. So we discussed those at length. And I, we, we thought it was a productive meeting and I think, um, I think uh. Party's left with an understanding of how we're approaching the project and, and hopefully minimal impact to, to uh adjoining neighbors.
And that, you did touch base on that. And the other one was the lighting. And I did notice in the report, there's like, it's still all over with the lighting. And I didn't know if you corrected that or that's gonna, you know, spill over into the neighbors.
Right, uh, so, uh, Betsy is here from the land uh development team and she'll be able to just run through the lighting real quick.
Okay.
How we address that. Betsy, but make sure you use the microphone, just.
So we are proposing.
Can you sort of dig into it?
Is that okay? You know, in the landscape strip on River Alley, two at the rear of the building and then two along the access drive. There's six total lights. The mounting height is sixteen feet. There's a photometric plant in the land development set that details lighting levels that those light poles create. Um, the spill over on River Alley is anywhere from, um, most of them are point one and point two foot candles. I think we're allowed point five foot candles by code and they are um. Shielded. There are structures on the lights that shield and direct the light in.
There's, there's not gonna be, there's gonna be minimal.
Minimal spill over. Um, there are streetlights. Well, that are higher than what we are proposing here.
Were the neighbors satisfied with that?
Yes, they, they seem to be satisfied with that. So we, we explained exactly, exactly what Betsy had mentioned about as far as the amount of light. We did talk about the PPL lights, um, you know, along the alley as well and the amount of light that comes off of those is, is greater than what will be. You know, we would be introducing it to the alley.
There are any other things you wanted to? You said the.
There aren't any other changes uh to the plan as noted. Discuss, we just had a lengthy discussion with the members about the project and. The neighborhood on project. The neighborhood on project.
Jeff, I know we were talking about the traffic pattern there. I don't know how much we could do. Somebody mentioned a practice study, I don't know if that was.
I mean, a traffic study is probably not required, but I believe at the, for the city, it's forty Trips per peak hour at twenty one units, you're probably not getting that level Of trip generation, but as noted during the previous Review, you know, the current configuration of the rear of the properties is essentially Unrestricted access for the whole back Property line between River Alley and that property line. And the project will basically restrict all vehicular access to a single point. At the north end of the site, because they'll be putting in the row of landscape screening and then curbing there as well, so they'll Basically, anybody Using the alley or going through the site will, you know, be aware that there's only one place where there will be any interaction, whereas now it's could be Pretty much anywhere across the back of the site. So in that sense, the Project is going to be improving safety by making it more predictable where people will be entering and exiting the site.
That's all the questions I have. We'll have the commissioners make their comments. Commissioner, too, any additional questions? I didn't want to get into the specifics of the building. That's yours. Your report.
Yeah, I was disappointed, see no changes there, but There's still time. Yeah, I can see a show of me, I'm not asking any comments, because you show of hand if anybody's here to To talk about, anybody in the public's here to talk about this This project. All right. Well, yeah, but I guess I just wanted, I I will see anybody who would be here and They they met with the public or with the neighbors and fact that none of them came here to complain. Or to express any interest, that's a good sign, so, yeah, I've done it further.
Mister Reed?
No, I have nothing.
Commissioner Green?
I don't have any questions, thank you.
I'll go to the public, if therefore against this project, please stand and state your name and address. I'll go to my left. Center. Okay, they have no comments. Commissioners, can I get a motion here? Land Development Plan?
A motion to approve its condition?
Is there a second?
Second.
It's a moving second for approval of the project with the conditions, all those in favor, state by saying aye. Opposed abstentions, motion carried. Good luck.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, we'll go on the agenda, we'll go to the old business. This is the first item is a variance and special exception application for capital heights phase two. It's located on forty one parcels across nine sites in the blocks generally bounded By Hamilton Street to the north, North Fifth Street to the east. Harsh Street to the south and Logan Street to the west. It's zone RM followed by Chris Bryce and David Long. With Midtown Redevelopment LLC is to request variance zoning relief From use and development regulation requires for the construction of four Townhomes, seventy six multi dwelling family dwellings unit. Nine thousand five hundred and fifty seven square feet of commercial space. And ninety five all street parking.
Yeah, so this is a continuation of a case that was initially submitted, I believe, in September Of last year and Following that review, there was a special meeting In late September that was held to discuss this project and also another project nearby submitted by the applicants in Marketplace Midtown area. That project was then heard introduced at the October Planning Commission meeting. And so at those meetings, there was some action taken. And there was also some aspects of the Projects that were continued and so And that both happened. Our previous deputy planning director was in attendance to those meetings, so I wasn't here, but I Did a lot, I did as well as I could reading through all the documentation that was submitted, the kind of various back and forth That happened, we've had some follow-up conversations with developers. And so through that, and they have provided the updated Zoning submission that you have before you, as well as an updated map. Or plan set, the updated plan set Has a few changes in that it labels buildings, I think Alphabetically instead of numerically. So, you know, that's what That's why there may be a little confusion as we look between them, but it also specifies exactly where parking is going to occur for each building. Because not each building doesn't have its own lot, although they mainly do, building B Doesn't and either do the small townhouse clusters. However, those Buildings, building A, B, and C were all previously approved by the Planning Commission at the October meeting, but they wanted to Better illustrate exactly how the parking arrangement was going to work and how it was going to be shared amongst the Other project sites. So, you know, I don't know that there's a lot to go over for buildings A, B, and C. And then the two little clusters of the townhomes, the continuances, however, were related to buildings D, E, F, and G. And those are the standalone multi-family dwellings on the, on the various project sites. So as part of their resubmission, the applicants did reduce the density of the developments. So I believe they removed a floor from each of the buildings, which essentially removed four units. And that knocked building D, E, and F down from sixteen units to twelve units. And then building G from twelve units to eight. And so that had the practical effect of essentially Removing the variance requirement for building D. Because it did fall within the density regulations of the zoning code and of Reducing the deviation from the zoning code for buildings EF and G. So in the updated, kind of, I guess, what do I call this, a case brief? The, most of the Discussion in here is related to those four buildings. And You know, the Planning Bureau had originally recommended the continuance for two reasons. The applicant needing to submit more complete documentation such as a pro forma or a letter from a financial institution regarding the justification for relief. Being proposed specifically with respect to the density and to clarify what relief is being requested. And that was kind of to the point that we hadn't seen anything like the required landscape screening or the trees required for the establishment of new Surface parking on site. And the applicant has provided some documentation for that. And then the second reason was the plane of your notes, the sites for buildings four through eight were previously subdivided as lots For townhome development with infrastructure and utility connections provided specifically for that configuration. As part of a previous capital heights development project that was partially completed. As evidenced by the construction in the blocks to the north and the shared dimensions of the developed and currently vacant parcels. And we said, as such, the burden of proof is on the applicant to explain why they cannot now be developed as townhomes, which would be in conformance with the zoning code. And so in their updated documentation, Again, the applicants Did note that They have two separate justifications for the relief, that the properties Have had a long period of vacancy over thirty years and they gave a little bit of a synopsis of the development history under Three to two previous owners and stalled development projects. And that there is a financial justification for the proposal as the lots As currently configured are not Suitable for development. To the latter point, the applicant has stated that the utilities currently installed are no longer sufficient due to their age. Their condition of being exposed to the elements for a couple decades and substandard design criteria. And thus will have to be removed at significant expense. And to this point, they have also referenced a legal precedent from a PA Supreme Court case from twenty fourteen In which the court determined that a hardship variance could be established by, among other things, proving that the property can be developed as a permitted use only at prohibitive expense. The applicant has stated that constructing the row homes as originally proposed, I guess Several decades ago in that original development plan Under current conditions would cost approximately two hundred and sixty thousand dollars each and would even be sold for three hundred thousand dollars. So, you know, I think The applicants have provided some documentation to justify the hardship. I don't know, you know, necessarily where the total cost Of the construction come from, we haven't gotten like a pro forma. I think it is probably true that, you know, the cost of The development has probably Cost required to develop something as originally approved decades ago has probably out Stripped the cost, the Amount of inflation has occurred at that time, so it has probably gotten relatively more expensive than if you would just You know, if inflation had stayed the same and you had just built the same project now as was proved in the past. I cannot really speak to the I guess insufficiency of the existing Utility connections. I don't know enough about building code requirements to know if like sewer line is no longer useful, you know, I think certainly having You know, clean out sticking out of the ground for twenty, thirty years, I think there's a likelihood that there's been some impact on that. And whether that necessitates the wholesale or wholesale replacement of those utilities. Really not something that I'll find To speak on, but I think the applicants do plan on referencing that in their testimony today. And then with, and and the plane bureau also kind of noted that They had included that information in their Response to the variance criteria, but it's almost generally more applicable to the special exception aspect of the code, because that's where You get into the proposal for the special, for the multi-family dwellings, which are what require the special exception, so it's almost less The number of units that are necessary to happen as opposed to the configuration of the building on site. So I just wanted to make that kind of clarification. Let's see. So another aspect of condition one was ensuring conformance with various development standards related to aspects such as the provision of trees, landscape screening. In the updated responses to the special exception criteria, the applicant has stated that the project will include these elements. Although not shown on the on the sketch plans here. The bureau is also recommending that proposed buildings D through G, the Multi-family dwellings, if approved, be constructed along the front yard property line. This is generally a condition reflected in older structures in the area, while some newer structures tend to have smaller setbacks. Although I know that the newer structures, I think, are more single families, so you have somebody On site maintaining The Maintain the appearance of that stuff and it may be a little bit more difficult to do under like a multi-family dwelling scenario. Additionally, Moving the, moving the buildings to the front yard setback Will basically increase the usable space in the rear of the building, so right now, if you create like a four or five foot setback, you may, you have four or five less Feet in the rear of the building to be able to do something with. It whereas if you move the building up to the front, now you've got ten feet, you may put a patio in or a fire pit or something like that. And it will provide more space for the screening, so basically by moving the building to property line. You enable the rest of the site to be Used better and to be more effectively used for both either meeting zoning requirements or amenities for residents on site.
Yeah, for just D and DNA?
D through, D through F, or sorry, D through G. Okay, so the other ones, B and C, A, B, and C are all constructed to the property lines essentially. The other ones were had an initial setback, but again, I think moving it to the property line Kind of reflects the historic development pattern in the area and also will, instead of having two small, maybe unusable spaces, create one usable space by. So that's basically the Planning Bureau's update to the Issues that were continued for the capital heights development. At the previous. So and I'll let the applicant address that and then we can get to the market. So the recommendations are pretty much as laid out here is like the That the, I guess, I didn't really like create like a formal case of course recommendations, but it would be that, you know, the Use the the buildings be fronted to the front property line. And then otherwise, you know, the applicants are providing enough parking on site, again, they have Reduced the density, which not only reduces a number of units on site, but also reduces the Hard off-street parking, so that will, you know, by its nature, also reduce the potential impact on On on-street parking in the surrounding neighborhood, so I think from from our perspective, if if that's done. You know, the property will be designed in an appropriate way. It would still be preferable to have maybe more information related to the financial aspects. I don't know whether the documentation that the applicant has provided will be sufficient by zoning hearing board to You know Rec to vote on approval of the of the project as submitted. It may be that the testimony from the applicants today will be taken as that Justification and then that can be, that will be Available to the zoning hearing board that make their determinations, but I looking at the documentation that was submitted, I can't say, you know, this proves the
Is that for just for G or is it for all of them?
That is for D through G.
Okay.
Because the other ones had already gotten the planning commission's.
Thank you, Steph. Could you state your names, address and relationship to the project?
Yep, Matt Long, I'm Vice President of Midtown Redevelopment at one twenty six Walnut Street.
Amanda Georgiyan, I'm attorney for the applicant on the fourteen twenty six North Third Street.
Gentlemen, you heard the staff report on capital heights and his recommendations. I'd like to hear your updates and your thoughts on his.
Thanks, Chairman. So just by starting kind of framing up Request by the planning bureau as to Building to the property line, that's acceptable to us, and I think that's the the big condition that they've raised tonight. As it relates to the requests themselves, because of the buildings now being right-sized. I don't think we're talking about a variance anymore as it relates to the use, it's now a special exception, so obviously that's a different criteria. There is relief required inside yard and rear yard and some other Issues, but again, that's dimensional relief and you've had plenty of experience dealing with dimensional relief as opposed to use, so I think that You know, we all understand the history of this property going back thirty years. If you could build thirty, forty townhomes here, somebody would have done it thirty years ago or maybe twenty years ago or maybe ten. I think it's important to realize that you're going to have six townhomes that will be built and they're going to be priced as affordable housing. And with that, you're going to have these additional apartment units that are going to help make the entire project work. I know there's been some talk about the financials and I think, you know, at the end of the day, every developer is a little concerned laying out their Financial plan and how they plan to develop, but I think the history tells us that This has been a difficult project and you now have developers that are willing to go forward. Now, in terms of the testimony tonight, I can have Matt go through The project and the changes that have been made since the last time we were here, we have our engineer here to talk about the utilities And what they know from Capital Region Water, what they prefer to see on these sites as opposed to multiple hookups. And talk about the age and everything and we're certainly Willing to provide all that testimony and we'll certainly do that before the zoning hearing board as well, too. But, you know, from our perspective, You know, you've approved a bunch of these buildings, D, E, F, and G for capital heights Are designed and built kind of in the same way, we'll build them up to the property lines as the planning bureau has asked. Are designed and built kind of in the same way. We'll build them up to the property lines as the planning bureau is asked. There's there will be sufficient parking. We're asking for relief from the side yards and rear yards and I don't think planning has any objection to that. I think it just comes down to, at the end of the day, what we all. I think understand historically from this development in Midtown, you know, what's viable, you know, what's what's able to be done. So. You tell us what you'd like to hear tonight and we'll put on the testimony. But I think, again, I think that we're fine with the conditions. If you'll give us the special exception and a relief. We'll go on to zoning and and we'll make our case there.
I would like to hear the updates.
Sure, yep.
Absolutely. One thing that we started with, we met with Jeff in December and then here last week and a few times over the last few months. To clean everything up to clearly illustrate parking situations. And to, one of the concerns from the public, Ms. Camille Hippen Steele that testified. Was concerned with the four-story height originally being proposed. We took that into strong consideration, you know, per her testimony, if these were three stories, she'd be amendable to the changes. And that's what we did. We scaled these back to three stories, pulled a lot of the parking that the additional story had necessitated. We cleaned up the parking situation. Every building has one parking space per tenant. In front of the bill or to the rear of the building. The only spaces that you'll see on L D one ten where you see that the color chart. Cross over. When we were discussing with Jeff in December. Buildings A, B and C. A has parking directly adjacent to it. B is kind of catty cornered landlocked out there in the corner of Hamilton and Fourth. So you'll walk across the walkway that we're creating between Third and Logan Street to get to the parking. There's no no ability to put the parking directly with it. But the the parking that you see on L D one ten for those two buildings. Is only for the commercial tenant. It's not for a residential tenant that will have to walk across the street. It's just for the commercial tenant. I know that was one of the concerns before is that the residents be not crossing the street to get to their building. And then if you look at the bottom of L D one ten, you'll see the green and yellow. And what those are is the overflow parking. We had the one parking space per tenant at the building, but then the overflow usage. For building E, you know, they would have to walk across Clinton Street for the overflow parking. And for building G would be the same, that they would have to walk across the road for the one overflow parking space. But we feel it meets the design of the existing neighborhood. This is how the townhomes are laid out as they point to their rear yard. They access it off of Rhodes Alley or the, I believe it's Meyer Alley, the one that's, there's currently nothing there. Think that covers a majority of the changes, other than of course, the some of the dimensional that Jeff had brought up about moving them. To the prevailing setbacks. Again, some of these don't have prevailing setbacks, so we'll leave that to the judgment of the. Planning Bureau. To outline that in the L D P.
And we'll have testimony from our engineer, please.
Yeah, so again, regarding the utilities, they're out there. As mentioned, the existing land of, which was about thirty years ago. Many utilities are out there. The condition and the sizing of them are will definitely need to be. Won't match code. So this, the benefit of this project will be able to simplify the amount of connections to these lots. Which will reduce the, you know, the overall stress of the infrastructure as well as. As benefits to. Say metering for capital, capital water. So, you know, really, the benefit here is. To reduce the amount of connections to these lots.
Okay, I'm going to go to commissioners for their questions and concerns.
Jeffrey, the. The bureau is fine with the the location of the parking lots, right? Parking space is correct.
Yes, the. You know, parking is generally in rear of the building on the site that they're on. I know they're in like rear yard setbacks, but they're off like the small alleys that were created as part of the original plan. Many of the. Of the townhomes that were built. Under the original plan, you know, have parking off the alley in a similar way where they ever park in that or a garage. So it'd basically be the same as that. All right.
Okay, so and they're agreeable to move in the the buildings up to the property line?
It sounds as if they are, yes.
And. So it seems to me like the only issue is the the infrastructure and, you know. How do we know what that is? I mean.
Right, and that's and that's like I said, you know, where the applicant will have to present testimony to the zoning hearing board to their satisfaction. Whether zoning hearing board is willing to accept, you know, verbal testimony or whether they would like to see some documentation, you know, I guess. Ultimately up to them.
Yeah, of course, you you don't have that now and I think we. For our purpose, I think we could. Resume that it's. How old? Twenty years old?
I mean, it sounds like, you know, per the the update they added, it sounds like it's virtually proposed in my nineties. Thirty years old.
Yeah.
Again, I can't really, you know, I don't have enough information, enough knowledge on those particular aspects of your finance. Infrastructure, but, you know, it does seem that if something's been sitting out for thirty years, it's probably not in the best condition. And you know, the reduction in the building height, that's the number of units, reduces a lot of the other aspects that might have. Been a bit more challenging for the for the applicants, you know, and with respect to. Any sort of public comment that may have. However, many. Sixteen less housing units, that's, you know, sixteen less vehicles probably. You know, so the impacts of the previous development proposal have been reduced in the changes.
All right. Now, in in light of the applicant's. Amendments reducing it from four units each voting and being willing to go up to the property line. I'm willing to accept the or to presume that the that the infrastructure is not up to par without hearing any more. Evidence to that. I mean, the private deal with that at the zoning. That's my position. Yeah, no questions for the applicant.
Well, Neil, did you have?
No.
Anything on that?
I I don't know if it matters, Mr. Chairman, but I was in the city solicitor's office thirty-two years ago when Capitol Heights was approved. I remember it. So I was sitting right where Neil was. So.
I don't know if that's good or bad.
Yeah, for me.
We did have a brief conversation with Capital Regional Water also. They don't have records of these installs of when they are put in and, you know, Maynard. Was pretty blunt to say, yeah, you're going to have to open every one of them up that we can check. These have been dry for twenty. For majority of them, they believe they were put in between ninety-one and two thousand one. So.
And and I believe at that time, the infrastructure would have been a responsibility of the city's water department. So. You know, if they don't have records, you know. Maybe they weren't transmitted. So Capital Region Water would not have had those records as being the first. As being like the primary point of contact at that time, just to just to clarify that.
Commissioner Reed.
Just for clarification, how many units are we?
It would D, E and F have twelve each. And then G would have eight. And they originally proposed as sixteen, 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 twelve.
Matt, how about all of Capitol?
It is sixty-four with its sixty dwellings between A, B, C, E, E, F and G. H and I are four townhomes, so the low income.
Commissioner Green.
I don't really have any questions on this right now.
If we go, or we should we do this separately versus are deeply together?
No, I would do them separately and you'd also probably want to ask.
That's why I was trying to.
Oh, yeah, I would probably do the two cases separately.
Okay. If anyone from the public were against this project, the Capitol Heights project. Please state your name and address and start to my right. Center and no one's going to my left.
I assume the public that we have here are interested in this project. So can you briefly describe procedurally how this will proceed? I mean, after, not not just for tonight, but after after night, there's a zoning hearing board.
That's correct. So the applications would move on to the zoning hearing board meeting on March twentieth. And so that is at least the first time that they would be introduced by the board. Again. Maybe they take action on that date maybe. But after, I'm assuming that the after that. A law consolidation land development plan would be required for both of these projects. And my guess is that the applicants are waiting, awaiting the result of the zoning relief. Applications and the determination on that before moving forward with law consolidation. And so the law consolidation land development plan would again come before the planning commission at a future meeting. And then move on to a city council meeting. Where it would be introduced in a legislative session, heard it at least one of the workshop sessions and then. A final vote would be taken at the following legislative session.
All those meetings are up to the public to come and participate.
That is correct.
And I'm I'm pretty satisfied with the corrections the applicants have made it on this. Especially giving a backyard, have a backyard. That's that's good. With that.
What what is the motion?
Yeah, I guess it would be a recommendation for approval with conditions. And our condition.
On the modified application.
Yes, not the original, the modified application. That the buildings be. Resetted to the front yard property line and it would be our recommendation that the applicants submit. Additional documentation for their hardship request. Prior to the zoning hearing board.
Commissioners, that's the motion.
Yeah, 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 make the I make the motion that we approve the the modified application with those two conditions that they. The reset concerning the the property lines.
Oh, sorry. And I should also mention, I think we had, oh no, we didn't have any original.
All right, and that the. Is it they that they? That they produce documentation and or testimony at the zoning hearing board? Is that what?
Yes, so at Monday's meeting, actually zoning hearing for one of the applicants. Presented expert testimony and the board voted to hear the expert testimony. So. The board will have to vote to accept whatever testimony is given as expert testimony.
All right, so those are the two conditions.
Is there a second?
Second.
Let's move in a second for approval. Of the Capitol Heights project, all those in favor state by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion abstained, motion carried.
Neil. And I do think you have to have on the record, although we don't have a record, except that you have voted on half of this same application, the original application previously. So you sort of have a hybrid set of approvals tonight. I don't know frankly what that means in terms of the zoning board. But you have two different votes for each half of this project, so. It's gonna, it's gonna be a little bit of a puzzle how that gets presented in a logical way at zoning. Because. The second half is modified. They'll probably want to talk about how that affects the first half. That would be my guess that was approved as presented. So.
Did you wanna?
Yeah.
Do the next one.
Sure. So then the next case, same same applicants here. With regards to Marketplace Midtown located on fifty-one parcels across eleven sites. In the blocks generally bounded by Riley Streets of the north, Hulk Streets of the east, Sabre Streets of the south and James Streets of the west. As on residential median density by Chris Bryce along with Midtown. Domino L C to request various unrelieved use of development regulation required for the construction of eighteen. Townhomes, forty-four multifamily, client, food hall, twenty-eight hundred and seventy-five square foot commercial space, eighty-four off-street parking spaces. So I was not able to get a planning bureau. Update review completed as I was with the Capitol Heights project, just kind of ran out of time a little bit. So, but I think in looking through everything, it seems that there were two. Basically outstanding issues and they are somewhat related and that was with respect to building A. Here in the plan sets that you have before you and similar to the Capitol Heights project, the applicant resubmitted. Updated kind of a zoning certification or or zoning review and then updated plan sets. And. The updated plan sets basically have two main changes. One is the parking lot between James Street and William Street and Calder Street and Saferd Street. I believe at, I believe that was approved, but the applicants did. Change the configuration to remove one of the curb cuts from Calder Street into a. Like a smaller tent space lot, which I think they would have had to do anyway because it had angled parking that were backing out into Calder Street. But they combined that with the parking lot just to the east that runs the full length of that block there so that there's. Now only two ways in and out of the parking lot, which again. Preserves on-street parking is a little bit better from a vision zero perspective because you have less. While still being able to provide parking for the uses here. The other regards, building A. And then the small parking lot just across Calder Street to the north for that. The applicants had originally posed a forty-four, sorry, fourteen. Space head in parking in the front yard setback of that building. And that was something, you know, that the planning bureau had opposed. And I believe in the. Discussion at the October meeting, there was some discussion about whether the stretch of Marion Street is wide enough to allow. On-street parking, because what would end up happening with the spaces as proposed. Is that they would remove the on-street parking spaces. So you, they have fourteen on here, but I think they would lose six on-street parking spaces. Subsequent to that review, we did follow up with the city engineer's office who confirmed that a. Parking lane has to be wide and a driveline eleven feet for a total of nineteen feet. I personally have run out there with a tape measure and measured it. I think it's like nineteen feet six inches. So it is wide enough to accommodate on-street parking, which we parked in Austin act configuration. So in discussions with the applicant, you'll see here on the second page, that's L D one hundred A. Of their updated site plan. They've got a design that. Has the building A, which had that front yard parking, fronting up to the property line on Marion Street. But then the parking lot to the north would retain, would remain the same. So that was another aspect of the project that the planning bureau. Generally didn't support just because it involved the creation of a new curb cut right beside where one was existing already. And we felt that, you know, vehicular access could have been made from the existing driveway behind that. However. It would, I think, need to kind of change some of the configuration, reduce the spaces on site as you see in that initial drawing to just for spaces. And so as kind of like a trade-off between not having that front yard parking in building A. The planning bureau is supportive of the eight space parking lot as proposed here with the curb cut on the. So we feel that that is inappropriate, you know. Compromise between any bureau and the applicants and we would be supportive of that design. What do you mean? So let's see, it would be. Four. Eight, that'd be twelve total. And with this, it would be a loss of four, I think, overall. Or sorry, it would be. I think actually. Like a lot, yeah, but lost about like four spaces from that initial design of this proposal. But you're gaining six on-street parking spaces. But you're gaining six on-street parking spaces there. Yeah, so, yeah, you'll get, you'll get those back, so that's then eight, and then it's like the, you that little parking lot. That's why somebody in.
That's why you're, that's why you're a lawyer, Sean, if you can count, you'd be a doctor.
Um, so, yeah, so, um, you know, again, the, the Plan Bureau, um, appreciates the redesign of that, um, site that's a specific, it's parking specific, um, and the alternative proposed by the applicant for Building A and the park about across the street there. Otherwise, I think approval was given, um, for all the other elements of the project, uh, at the October meeting. Um, and so you'd really kind of just be operating, uh, acting on those two aspects of this.
That, that's the extent of your report, Jeffrey?
Uh, yeah, that's the extent. And, and, um, you know, kind of following up on the discussion with the last one, um, you know, this will then go to the zoning hearing board, uh, subsequent to which there will be a land development plan submitted, which will again come before the planning commission.
All right, and to the applicant, the Jeffrey summarized the changes, is there anything you want to add to, to what is, or?
No, we're, yep.
Okay, uh, yeah, for me, uh, I, I dreaded this tonight because of those fourteen spaces next to Bo-, Building A, but you're, by eliminating that issue, I'm ecstatic and I'm ready to go, so I got nothing else to add, uh. Let's hear from the other two.
I have, I have nothing.
James Seto, I'm sorry.
It's okay, I have nothing.
Asha.
Um, I had a question, I completely lost it, so, no, I, I think I'm good. Oh. Marion Street, um, this is more, more for the Planning Bureau, uh, you said it's, it's too, it's wide enough to accommodate parking. Um, if people, if cars were parked there, is it, is it large enough for like a refuse truck to drive down the street?
Uh, yes, and that's why it would be like eleven feet wide, because technically, um, ten feet is like a minimal way for a travel lane, but I think that was why the City Engineers Office said that it were those larger.
Okay, just making sure because we don't want to create, um, issues that we have throughout the city already, which is that if people park there, then you can get trash trucks down the street, and then people park on the curb for trash. Yeah, so we don't want to, we don't want to create that problem, so just asking.
But, I mean, there is, and I think there are, is like on, there are vehicles that park on the street now, and I'm just, I guess, um, the trash trucks traveling down that uh, are able to travel down that.
Only question I have, thank you.
All right, uh, anybody for the public, wish to address this, uh, this plan? Okay, all right, uh.
I would say you can't take a vote yet.
I was just gonna ask the solicitor, if, if the fact that Joe's here, but not present to vote, we don't have a quorum right now.
Yeah, you might, just want to wait a couple of seconds there. You do have a new member coming.
Okay.
Yeah. Yeah. It was introduced last night.
So I didn't get the, uh, updated report done for this one, um, I will have something for this.
All right, now that Joe's back, I make, uh, a motion that we approve the plan as modified, is that all we need?
Um, yeah, I mean, I guess the, the staff condition would be, uh, the option with no front yard parking and leaping space parking.
All right, that, that's my motion.
Uh, is there a second?
A second.
Move in a second for approval with the conditions, all those in favor state by saying aye.
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 Opposed, abstentions, motion carried. Thank you. Yeah, um, before I get to any other business, understand, Commissioner Green, uh, these young ladies have a, um, they like to discuss, we usually don't discuss matters here, but, uh, and I, uh, I'll, I'll look as a section and, and see, but you and state your name and your address.
Good evening, my name is Erin Palmer, and I live in the seventeen hundred block of Booth Street here in Harrisburg. So we were here, many of our, my neighbors were here about two weeks ago to address one of our concerns. Um, the old Woodward Building. A developer, we understand, is planning to build a low-income housing development, and we are strongly opposed. There were more resident, neighborhood residents here a couple of weeks ago, um, and it was suggested that we come to this planning meeting, my first planning meeting, I'm trying to learn the process. Um, I didn't see anything on the agenda from, uh, Fernandez developers. Um, but we just want, I personally, they can speak for themselves, I wanted to be on record that I oppose this, uh, plan.
So technically, there's not a plan yet, so there's.
Okay, and, and let me just say, um, we were here two weeks ago, and you remember talking to us. Sunday's newspaper, there was another article about, um, this plan, so I'm just trying to educate myself, essentially, I noticed on the agenda for today, so am I correct in, in thinking that had he submitted anything, it would be a variance, that, is that how it works?
We, we, we would not know yet, until, until he does it, and the board really can't comment because they don't know what the plan is.
Okay.
He may have a plan of his own, he does not have a formal plan submitted for consideration and application, so we won't know if he's asking for a variance, a special exception, just a land development plan, we won't know that until he presents the Planning Bureau with the proper set of documents. Those documents then have a timetable in which they have to get onto an agenda before this board for consideration from the application date. So unless something changed since last, the end of last week, there's been no application yet to the city.
We, we have not had an application found for that, and as, you know, notes, you know, we don't know exactly what would be required, but I can confirm that at least the land development. So that would be, uh, heard by this body and then the city council, um, and possibly zoning relief, which would be this body and then the zoning. Um, but I can confirm that there, we have nothing to review, nothing has been submitted, and unfortunately, kind of for me, um, developers often get out ahead of themselves on these types of projects where they like to, you know, have a nice rendering or picture in the media, that I think, you know, get the word out there, all that kind of stuff. Um, and sometimes, you know, you might not see an actual form of proposal for months, or maybe ever. Um, so, you know, there was a lot of, I think, news articles about the, the old federal courthouse and Walnut and Third there, and, um, you know, that's been up in the air for a year and a half now, and we've never received any, or any permits for that, so, um, just because some things out there in the media doesn't necessarily mean that either, um, A, they have submitted something to us, or B, they will be submitted. So, um, but, uh, if they do, uh, reach out to me, and if they do, if I, if they do intend on submitting something, I will make sure they reach out to the neighbors, to your, um, community, and I'm guessing you, uh, put your, um, phone number and name on the sign sheet.
I did.
I'll make sure, if you can put like a star of all of you, uh, next to your names, I'll make sure that, you know, a developer, um, reaches out to you.
Uh, I'm gonna add to what Jeff, Jeff is saying, and again, with the process, and I'm glad you brought this up, but, uh, we'll make sure you get, definitely you three ladies get a notice, but for them to be on the agenda, Jeff will send you a notice, uh, I mean.
Well, the, the property will be posted.
One-on-one, what hovers, since they are interested, but that's usually the way it happens, it, it has to come through the planning board planning bureau, where whatever plan they have, you know, no matter what they say in the paper. But just so you guys are aware of it, we will notify you so that you could come to that meeting, just like tonight, I asked for the public, and then bring all your neighbors down if you're into that project, so.
Okay, when, and, and just for clarification, when you say you will notify us, is that us personally, or the little notification that goes on a telephone pole?
Yeah, so, so there'll, there'll be multiple, um, methods by which, um, the community will be notified, first of all, if they are filing a zoning relief application, they're required to send a notification letter to all property owners within a hundred feet of the site, um, that gives that like basically says, I am so-and-so, this is what I'm planning to do, this will be heard at these coming meetings, so that you will know exactly what dates they intend on having their application. Um, additionally, uh, the, um, if it's a zoning relief request, it's, uh, published in the Patriot News. Um, and then we, I will also, uh, go out and post a notice, um, on the property that basically says what the project is and when it will be heard, and it's in bright, uh, neon orange. Um, so it's like pretty hard to miss, like you'll see it, it's up there, um, but I know for, um, uh, you know, this, this project or this property in particular, uh, how important community outreach is because there have been two other proposals for this site, uh, one I think was in twenty eighteen. Like that, and both times there has been, uh, you know, the community has been pretty active about contact.
Absolutely.
So I'll make sure, um, you know, when, if and when something is filed, that, um, the applicant is informed that he should reach out to them.
Jeffrey, when the, when does, was our agenda posted on the website, too?
Um, yeah, I get them out as, as fast as I can.
Talking days or weeks before the meeting?
Um, so I think this one was posted last Friday.
Okay.
Um, but again, the, the actual postings, um, will probably be up the physical ones on the property before then, and the notification letter that the applicant sends out should be even before that. Like weeks before the actual, like, planning commission would happen because they're supposed to submit that with their application, which is always like, the submittal deadline is always the, a month before the actual meeting. So like, they should be submitting to, to me, letters that say, I have sent this, or, you know, letters that basically go out to all the property owners within a hundred feet with proofs of mailing, so that, you know, I can say, yes, please, they go out.
Oh, you.
I will receive that as part of their submission.
Oh, okay. Well, obviously, we're just trying to stay ahead of the game, because, um, twenty nineteen, twenty twenty, and there was incorrect information posted, and fortunately, we, you went around, um, there was an incorrect number, um, so things happened.
Okay.
All right, so I'm, I'm not losing my mind, I read the article, you didn't, but God, we had someone for that property came for us within the last year or two, I, I, I was, yeah, twice, okay, all right.
Okay.
As, like you said, if you can, uh, put a star next to your name, just so I know, um, uh, which of you showed up here, uh, I will give him your contact, uh, give the applicant.
I'd like, I'd like to make another recommendation, too, I, I don't know if you have a neighborhood group, but, but you might, um, I don't know, registered, there's like ten neighborhood groups throughout the city, and a lot of times they can get notices, so maybe you can sort of register your group with, um, Jeff also.
I believe you're Schreinerstown, correct?
No, we're here in Harrisburg, right?
Uh, but, uh, the Neighborhood Association is Schreinerstown?
No.
Okay, um, maybe I'll think of another one, um, but if you have like, uh, you know, an email address to like president at whatever your neighborhood, um, association is, um, that would be, you know.
We, we have a.
Informal.
It's, it's informal.
Okay, okay. Again, I, I will make sure, um, that.
Okay, one last question, when you say you have the developer reach out, do we really need to talk to the developer?
Well, I mean.
Want to talk.
Well, I mean, he, he should be, he should be, as the play, as the playing commissioner will tell you, like, he should be rep, reaching out to, or she, um, should be reaching out, um, to the neighborhood to say, hey, I'm coming into your neighborhood, I would like to have a meeting.
Okay, so that's what he should do?
Yes.
Okay, okay.
Especially for, uh, the project of this.
Okay. And if he does it, that'd be good, and know that none of us want it.
Well, and I, and I think if and when the application does get here, planning commissioners will ask them, and if their answer is no,
Okay.
they're gonna, you know, say, hey, maybe you want to do that.
So this developer did do that for another project. It is my understanding that he has just put out for either bid or RFP for a general contractor on this project.
This new?
Yeah.
George, uh, Fernandez?
Which I think they'd probably have the contractor be the one to coordinate the community outreach. That is my understanding of, of where they were as of Tuesday night. I forget, but he's, he's using, uh, he should, on the other project, he's Steel Works, the Jonathan Bowser, and Jonathan, Mr. Bowser was there last night, so I asked him if he was on this project, he said no, but he had gotten a notice, uh, to see whether he would, uh, bid on this one like he did on the last one, and, uh, he, and he thought there were three bidders on the project.
But again, before, before this meeting, um, I in advance of this meeting, I will make sure that the owner has your contact information, and if they don't, or the developer, whomever, if they don't reach out to you, like, they're gonna hear.
Okay, all right, thank you for your time.
Thank you. Definitely, anything else?
No, uh, this, but, uh, you know, with Neil telling me you guys, uh, looks like you're gonna fill that final vacancy, so got introduced, uh, last night, so that'll be exciting, and I know, I know the individual, he, um, is a good, good guy, and, uh, will bring, I think, a unique skill set. Uh, his name's Deron Jordan, um, he works, at least used to work for CAP, so.
He works for Michael Baker now.
Yeah.
Yeah, I tried to, I tried to lure him here when he interviewed, and we can't, we can't afford him.
I've, I dealt with him in his previous capacity, and I think, you know, cares, cares about the city, and, uh, like I said, he'll bring that kind of transit aspect, so when we talk about like how people are getting around and stuff, though, I think that's.
Your motion for adjournment?
All right, motion to adjourn.
Is there a second?
Wait, who's, who's second?
Second.
Okay.
All right, we stand adjourned.
Okay, yeah.